Good evening. Good morning, or whatever time you're watching this. My name is Trenton Taylor and welcome back to the Accounts Podcast. I started this show back in two thousand and twenty-three as more of a joke, but um I'm relaunching it to talk seriously about things I care about. Community, uh schools, uh policy, world problems and things like that. Um so but I just wanted to give you a quick uh uh definition uh for the reason why I call it the Accounts Podcast. The definition of an account is a report or description of an event or experience. So I want to use this podcast to tell different stories, to tell, you know, factual information to uh you know, enhance our community. So um as you can see from the title, uh I'm not sure what the title is gonna be. I think it's gonna be uh the the true story of a local school board. So uh let's get into it. So first, I wanna say that I'm a proud graduate of North Chicago, North Chicago Community High School Class of two thousand and twenty-four. The best class to come out of North Chicago High School. Um and I um and um I still stay active in my community. I still volunteer and uh see still take into account of what about what's going on in my community. I go to I go to college locally in the in the area. So I have the ability to go back regularly or when I'm needed to help any way I can. Um but yeah, so let's get into it. Today, we're gonna talk about North Chicago D one eighty-seven School District. And um yeah, so let's get into it. So uh years ago, North Chicago uh elected school board was uh replaced because of some of the governance and some fi- financial issues. And you know, um things were going good, so the state the state decided to take over, I think almost over a decade ago. And um which caused um yeah, like I said, repeating myself, which caused the school board to get uh taken away. And um and it's been under the independent authority and financial oversight panel ever since. Um but uh the district has made with the independent authority has made very significant uh progress in enhancing the district of North Chicago. Bringing it out of the um place that it was in, um replacing the standards, making it a better school district. And which caused which led to them, school board being having eligibility to return back to an elected school board. One more time, one more time, just so if you didn't hear me, the independent authority made significant progress in enhancing the district of North Chicago, which led to the community having the opportunity to go back to a partially elected school board. Let's get into it. So at in April of two thousand and twenty-five, that was the first election for three elected school board members to join the independent authority this year, April two thousand and twenty-five. They have a plan to go to a fully elected school board in two thousand and twenty-seven, but they also will have have a um uh the financial oversight panel will still be in place. I believe it's two thousand and thirty, don't call me on that. Uh you know, don't call me on that, I think it's two thousand and thirty until they are gone there, but uh but like I said, things are not perfect. Nothing is perfect at all, you know. Um it's hard for things to be perfect because it's perfect, first of all, it's a public school, public school district. These can be perfect, but uh the district has made significant significant strides to become a better school district for us, the students of North Chicago has made significant progress and things are moving in a positive direction as of now. But um um you know, everyone doesn't like things being positive, they always wanna go to the to the negative sides of uh things. So uh let's talk about that, let's talk about narratives, talk about narratives. When I was in high school, um you know, when I was in high school, keep repeating myself, I'm sorry. But I'm just trying to get my thought together, um. I saw a very negative uh narrative that was placed on the students of North Chicago. And uh people would judge the students of North Chicago, me and my peers based on things that they don't even know about, based on what they think is happening in North Chicago, but not what is actually happening. What they think we we are capable of, but not what we are actually capable of. And I that really concerned me and in middle school, um middle school before covid, I found an interest in photography and photography, you know, was my bridge because I didn't really do sports in uh during my time in school because of some, you know, I had asthma, severe asthma. So I didn't really play sports, but I was very into media and stuff like that. Um so when it came to high school, um myself and a very and a lot of other individuals, we helped build a student media club, which is now coming into a program, classes. But the goal of our club was to make was to change the narrative of North Chicago away from the stereotypes and towards what's really actually happening in North Chicago, not what people say say, what other people believe, not what people wanted to post on social media about, but what's actually happening in North Chicago, but the story being told by the students. Um uh yeah, so people who don't live here like to tell our story, but they don't know our story because they're not here. And sometimes that's what our reasoning for this podcast, sometimes just people in our own community are the people contributing to a narrative that doesn't really fit us, a negative narrative, not a positive one. Um and so we're gonna go back to the elected to the election school, elected school boards. But the thing about the elected elected school board is that um during the elections, the le- elections were very negative. They there are a lot of things that were said were not were not positive, but a lot of the things that were said were negative. And it's important that, you know, um I guess, of course, in politics, everyone says one thing when they're running. But when um it's actually time to do the work, it changes. But it's important that when we say things, when we're when we say things while we're running, it's important that we, you know, keep the keep the same energy, if you will, keep the same energy. Um one more time, sorry, one more time, what? And a lot of the discourse that were spread from the uh some of the elected officials focused on neg- on negatives and sometimes uh misinformation. Uh and um yeah, so we have to realize what how do I put it, what? Let me reframe what I'm gonna say. We have to think about the bigger picture, but not focus on nitpick on things to hurt us in the long run. Um so like I was saying, the election was very messy. Some of the members were fine, but some of the members were very messy and they didn't, they didn't, in my opinion, they did not uh the behavior was just un- unusual for an elected school board member and uh and an adult person. Um but um yeah, so let's talk about it. There was four, four people that ran for the uh ran for the office, but only three of them were on the ballot, so technically uh there was a writing candidate, so technically all three of them won by default because uh those were the only three names on the ballot. Um so they won by default, all they needed is one vote to win. So yeah, winning by default means there was no opposition, as sure what was not technically. And um yeah, so the past, so this happened in April twenty, April two thousand and twenty-five. And I would say that that the transition to an elected school board has not been good. It hasn't been smooth, it's just been full of drama and negativity. And yeah, so um um today, I wanted to talk about a situation that happened in North Chicago. First of all, I'll talk about a personal situation and then I'll talk about the most recent situation. While the um the election was going on, when I was seeing those said people, those person, person, that how do I frame this? When I saw the misinformation spread, it um it wasn't important for me to let the community know, to let that elected person, that elected candidate know that what they were doing was spreading misinformation. And you know, basically, I wanted to stop the lies and tell the truth. And you know, um they didn't like that, which caused um you know, uh doxing and things like that, there's some, a lot of crazy things happening. But the reason why I bring that up is because that led to um somebody talking that like either the elected official person or someone else telling uh the superintendent of schools of North Chicago D one eighty-seven that they were so called and concerned about my involvement in the high school with the with the uh I guess motive to get me from being able to volunteer or uh in the media and things like that around the school. And once again, um when we're running for public office, it's important that we not run on vendettas or hurt feelings. We should run for, we should run to make our community better, to for the progress of our community, not because of a personal ego or vendetta. It's important, that's important. We can't be personal, business, business shouldn't be personal, it should be about business. And just because um if you post something public publicly online, expect public discourse. And if you don't like it, don't post it. Hey, amen, amen. One more time, if you don't want people to say nothing about it, don't post it. Amen, amen. So um so yeah, so that person attempted to get me barred from coming to the high school over a personal ego or vendetta, but not based on actual facts, actual concern, actual immediate threat. Um so yes, I keep saying so, I'm sorry, but let's get into something current, a current situation. So um uh a community member may named Carlos Smith uh who who is a long, has been a positive, longtime presence in our school district. Uh like from hyping up events, encouraging students and being the pride, being bringing the pride and energy to our schools, helping with the helping with the band. He uh I worked with him in the media, with the media team, providing valuable insight and even donating equipment to us. And um he's been a very big part, a very big part in a in a uh a very needed volunteer, a person from our community needed and uh contributed to the positive, to the positive at our school. And um yeah, but um um he decided to make a video, I'm not gonna really just, I'm not gonna give you a general overview of the video, but not gonna play it or anything, but the video was a, first of all, the video was a joke and the video had context, one more time. The video was a joke and the video had context, amen, one more time. The video had was a was a joke and the video had context. And when I say context, I mean it was relevant. It wasn't a random, I could understand if it was a a random video, I could understand if it was a a ra- random video, but it was, but it was had context and it was um uh a joke. And on top of that, after people took it a wrong way, he made another video clearing up his intentions. But apparently um they were saying that uh the video posed a danger to the students of North Chicago, which they banned him from being able to volunteer in school district one eighty-seven. And I would say this, though, it's important that when we talk about social media, that we have, we are equal. We're equal and it's important to uh to understand the facts. Um if board members can dox people, can talk mess about people, can do a whole lot of, a whole lot of uh negative and hateful things on social media and with no consequences, why are we putting uh consequent, why are we holding someone else up to a high standards when we are we ourselves are not held up to the same standard? Like uh what I mean by that, like um like if I had a standard, I set the standard, but I tell you to follow that standard, but I myself don't follow the standard. That doesn't make sense. It's if I wanna hold up to a standard about the safety of North Chicago, I should also be uh do be doing the same thing. So it's very, it's very interesting if if people on that on that board can dox people and do uh contribute, do things like that that are negative, but we wanna hold someone else to a high standard when ours, when ourselves are not doing the same. And um so after he was banned, um of course, he was, he was, he is a big, a big voice in our community. And the people, the following board mem- board meeting after that, the community came out to support him. A lot of community members came out, a lot of the community members sent emails and things to superintendent and the board of education. And um um and that's what that's what happened. A lot of community members came, it was very powerful, people had a lot of things to say, a lot of positive things to say. And the board was uh the board chair made emphasis on wanting to hear what the community had to say and was very um open to hear what the community had to say and hear. And um which led to them having a special, a special meeting to discuss that very issue. And uh the problem with the with the Carlos ban was the that there was no uh there was no there was a, there was a policy, but it wasn't, I guess, a clear policy. But let's, let's talk about that. We're gonna talk about policy versus procedure. So if policy sets the rules and conse- and consequences, but without a clear policy, um they can, without a clear policy, you can basically do anything. So for an example, him being banned, without a policy, without a standard for like repercussions, the being banned, him being banned is something that um can happen. And I think it's important that we that they establish a policy. So uh people being kicked out or whatever is not, is based on a violation of policy, but not a violation of someone's ego. And um once again, policy versus procedure. The the procedure is, for example, the procedure is um that all, everyone is supposed to go through the main entrance of the high school, uh submit their ID, go through a soft background check and then state their case of being in the school and get buzzed in. That's the um, that's the um thing. And the why, that's another thing that I wanted to talk about is um the procedure. Every adult that comes into the school has to go through a raptor, a raptor background check, which where they submit a government ID and which takes them, which goes through a database of which goes through a database looking at uh like sex offenders and things like that to make sure that we, who we know is going to our school. And they get a printout badge, which they have to wear the badge when walking through the schools and have to state their case on being there. So policy versus procedure. We ha- we have procedure in North Chicago to protect our students, not anyone can just come in. Uh North Chicago, when I was in high school, they invested in a secure vestable, vestibule, whatever. I hopefully I'm saying that right, I'm just a little tired today, but uh secure space, so you can't. So once you're buzzed into the school, you can't just walk past security. You have to, there's a box where you have to submit an ID, you have to sign in, you have to uh state your case of being there to be buzzed into let let into the school, just like any normal security measures. Um not just anyone can come in, but policy, but once again, policy versus procedure. Although that is the procedure, but just like any law, any law, it can be violated. And with that policy, it's important that um we have a policy so we can know what to do then. But yeah, but no, once again, North Chicago did that did does have a procedure and policy to keep students safe from uh individuals just coming into our schools. Um so like I said, there was a meeting, special meeting especially for him. But I wanted to talk about that meeting today, you know, that meeting was was um you know, very um the 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 behavior in that meeting was highly unusual for a public meeting. Uh it was um um yes, it was highly unusual and um so let's dive into it. So first, the meeting uh started off with a, they were gonna review a policies, then it, they they needed to update their policy. So the board superintendent, Dr. Price and his team developed a volunteer policy. And of course, for poli- for policy to be uh to be, how do I put it? To be enacted, they have to be approved by the board of education. So they were gonna approve a policy and they were going to um so they could get a policy in order. And also, I wanted to mention that all volunteer uh according to Dr. Price, all volunteer uh things are paused because of the situation. And um so yes, they had a policy on the on the agenda and a policy, the policy was action, an action item on the agenda. And if you don't, and if you don't, if you haven't gone to a board meetings, let me bring you into it. So a lot of the procedure at a board meetings, they have action items and discussion items. Action items are things that are ready, that the that the that are recommended to be acted on today. Discussion items were just to discuss, so the so so the um so the superintendent has an idea of what the board has an idea of, but even still, even still, all those things are action items. The board still can discuss it and that happens every single meeting. And um there was disagreements over an action item and they were making a big, a big, the, some of the elected board members were making a big deal over it being an action item. And uh which, you know, I was, which, you know, you could argue that there's a reasoning behind it. And my personal view is that they didn't um, they didn't want, I don't know how to put it. All I can say is it was ego, split it that way, just ego. And um um one more time, it was ego. And um so I saw all this, they were arguing, like it was like the, they were arguing in the board meeting. I've never seen that before, I've gone to board meetings almost three years, four years now. And I'd never seen that before, I'm in the four years of a board arguing. And one of the, one of the key things that um one over, one of the key things is that North Chicago, they had a, they had their board attorney. This is which is good because the burn, uh the attorney keeps makes make sure that everything is legal and the board is doing everything right, just to make sure for a peace of mind. And the uh board and the attorney was giving the elected board members, you know, saying it is legal. It is with their action items, explain the action and discussion items, doing, you know, what a legal counsel should should do. And um and I felt like the um they were coming off, coming across as overconf- overconfident and dismissive towards legal counsels, a legal counsel, a person with a JD, a person that understands, went to school to learn about the law. So of course they would know, we have to make sure that, you know, we listen to our, to people who know things, you know, as a, as a kid, as a uh person, it's important life skill to listen to wise people, people who have had experience and said things. So yeah, that's important, it's important that we listen to wise counsel, it's important that, it's important, it's important. And um um so the meeting was, once again, the meeting was out of ordinary. And um you know, which caused me to speak for the first time ever, I never spoke at a board meeting before, but I had an itch to speak because it was crazy. There were, they, like I said, we should, the district has made significant strides to be a better district. And I feel like we should stop all the drama and and find ways that we can continue the momentum of the district. Stop with the drama, stop with the ego, it's about the, if it's really about the students of North Chicago, then work. Then be a positive person, be, try to move the district forward, not backwards. And um I spoke and after I spoke, um this is a very interesting thing. Uh I wanted to share uh um Carlos was was able to speak, Mr. Smith, he was able to speak. And let's hear what he had to say. Um let me get it ready. Hold on one second. So the reason why I'm showing you this clip is because um it's very important that we understand what was actually happening at this board meeting and why I call it unusual. Um so let's get into it, let me play the clip starting now.
Can you add me, can I say something? Okay. I don't know say that, I just wanna listen, but uh I just wanna say this, I feel like I, I feel like I should just be like, I'm cool. And I know y'all not doing this just for me, y'all doing this for everybody else, we also volunteer. But I I in the back of my mind, I hear this voice and be like, just forget it and just let y'all just just forget it and not come back to the school. Cause I feel like this is crazy. And I get what y'all trying to do and and I hope it's not just about me, it's about the procedure of the volunteer form and about the procedure of being a volunteer. But I truly, this is amazing that this is happening, just and maybe I'm just the dude that's running through getting the arrows in the back. But I feel like this is crazy and I feel like I just wanna say forget it, like I don't, I don't wanna come back. I just wanna be at the crib with my, with with my dogs, you know, family. So I just wanna say that, that this is very discouraging um and and it's slightly heartbreaking uh at the same time that I have to hear this happening and it's me that I gotta go through the whole thing, I get it. But I just wanna let y'all know that that's, it sucks. And whether y'all, if they vote to be like, yeah, I probably won't, I probably won't do that, I appreciate it.
So let me pause it for a second. So you heard that, that was a very heartfelt heartfelt statement about, you know, what, all the craziness that was happening. And I want you to listen to what a board member did after that heartfelt statement about this whole thing. Um listen to it, listen to what's about to happen.
This is not the kind of activity that the school district is accustomed to.
Right, like the board chair said, this is not what district one eighty-seven has been accustomed to for the last decade that has been in place. You heard, you hear that foolishness that was happening, I'm not foolishness, do you hear that was happening? Do you hear that behavior? Do you hear that behavior that's unusual for a public meeting? Um, it's unusual for a public meeting, there was a clap, are you kidding me, it wasn't, it wasn't? And it, it was one of the board members that did that and that's extremely disheartening and extremely um, disappointing. Which adds on to what I've been saying for the past thirty minutes. We can't let our ego, we can't let, let our personal vendettas harm. Or be in the way of, for the business of the students of North Chicago. We can't use personal agendas. In politics, you know, why? It's very common in politics, people using a personal agenda, but that's not the right way. You should not be in a personal, you are, um, you are, uh. You know, you're using North Chicago children. You're putting North Chicago's children's education on the line for your personal vendetta. Like, you're just gonna burn down, cause of one person. Or you don't like one person, so let's burn it all to the ground, you have a, uh, a weak mindset, things like that, you know, it's not. It's not the right thing to do and it's important that um, people. Get called out for that, people get caught off, caught out for their behavior, which is uh, absolutely. Disheartening, absolutely not the best thing to happen and uh, I wanted to um. Um. Uh, say this, for the community members, if any community members are watching, I mean, listening, I want to make this clear. District one eighty seven. Superintendent Price. They were ready to reinstate Mr. Smith. To be, to be able to volunteer at the school district, one more time. They were ready to reinstate. Carlos Smith. To be an elected, I mean, sorry, they're ready to reinstate him to be a volunteer. They're ready to do that on uh, uh, when the meeting was being held. But because of the elected school board members, that did not happen, one more time. Third time, I think, I think it's the third time I said it. Dr. Price, an independent authority, was ready to reinstate. Carlos Smith under the uh, volunteer, volunteer policy pending an application. But it did not happen because of the elected school board members. So if any misinformation is spread, if any things are, is said, I have the audio, have the minutes. Then it only happened because of them. And uh, one more time, I, well, not one more time, sorry. We must be active and not passive, community members, one more time. We must, we must not be passive. Community members, we must be active and what I mean by that, we have to show up. If we're gonna be a community, we have to show up, we can't just be, we can't just. Watch and look and laugh and joke and clown, we must be active in our community. To make our community better, one more time, we must be active community members, not passive community members. We have to be the voice, we have to speak out, we have to help our community and not just let things. Like that clap, things like that meeting happen. And if we're gonna be, those people work for us and that's what I, that's another thing. When people claim to run on community, claim to run on the people, but forget the people when they. Get into that position. So it's important that we as a community are active in our schools, active in our community. To stop things like that, to stop personal vendettas, to stop our schools from being used for personal vendettas. Our school districts to be used for personal vendettas and egos, um, so, yeah. So. Our next thing we're gonna talk about is um. How school boards work, uh, so first of all, the school boards, school board members do not have, or do not have. Though, do not manage the day-to-day operations of the school district, so some of the members wanted to just walk into the schools. And just, you know, I don't know why they wouldn't walk into the schools, because who do you think? They don't have the authority to do that, they don't have any day, day-to-day authority, they should be escorted, they should be, they should have to contact the su- superintendent. Because they have no, they are not district employees, they can't just be walking around the schools, looking into classrooms. Trying to ex- extort some authority when they do not have any authority or any day-to-day operations, so um. Yeah, so another, another thing is primary versus secondary, secondary sources. It's important that we get our information, they get the information that we spread from a primary source, not a secondary source. Why? Because we wanna share accurate information and we want to stop the spread of misinformation. Stop the spread of negative narratives in North Chicago. If you want our, if you want North Chicago to be better, if you want our community to have a better name, it's important that we tell the true narrative. But not the fake narrative, one more time, tell the truth narrative, but not the fake narrative. And another thing, another thing is tell what's happening good in our community louder than. Speaking about what's happening bad, that's another thing in our community that's bad. Why are we always trying to amplify the negative, but forget the positive? One more time, why are we trying to uh. Inflate the negative, but forget the policy, quiet on the, on the positive, but loud on the negative. We have to stop that in order to push our community forward, we have to congrat- congratulate our students, we have to push our students, we gotta hype them up. So they know that they are valuable in our community. Now, primary versus secondary sources, a primary source would be like going to a meeting. Reading the agenda, reading the minutes, listening to recordings, but most important, attending these meetings. Don't just listen to what somebody says, don't listen to a, a Facebook post, don't just uh, listen to what your friend said. Try to get the primary source, try to get the primary source so we can spread. So we know what we're talking about and make sure you do your research, I know it's, it's very uh. Elementary by saying this, but don't believe everything you see on the internet, don't believe everything you say, you, you see on the internet. And understand that people have bias, people have motives, people have agendas, so when you hear, when you obtain information, you have to take that into account. What is this person trying to tell me, what is their motive, what is their bias, what is their connection to said information that they're, that they're spreading? You have to do your own research and do your own fact checking to, uh, cause you don't wanna look like an uneduc- uneducated person. You don't want to um. You don't want to, um, you wanna, you wanna have a, you have to, wanna have a deep understanding and you don't wanna, uh, um. You want, you wanna verify, verify claims, so we don't spread inaccuracies. So, yes, yes, amen, amen. But um, the last thing I wanna talk about is education as a whole. Education first starts off at the home, Proverbs twenty tw- twenty-two six. Train up a child in the way they should go and when they're old, they will not depart from it. One more time, train up a child in the way they should go and when they're old, they will not depart from it. And um, so what I think we should do. Or what, what is, what, but what is true is education starts off at the home, education starts off with the parents. It does not, education does not start in kindergarten, education does not start when students are in school, August to May. Education starts at the home, starts off at the house, not at the school. So if you're, if your ki- your kid is struggling, if students are struggling, you should not only rely on the school. You should take some responsibility for their education and their progression as well. It's not always about the school, we can't just um, rely on the school, the school, education should not. Should not start and should not stop when they get into the school, like for an example, church. You can go to church, you go to church, praise, pray, learn about God. But when you leave the church, you don't read the Bible, you don't act like a, a cit- a good citizen, you don't do Lord's work. But you only do that when you're at the church, you get what I'm saying? Education, schooling does not start and does not stop at school. It should start at the home, train up a child in the way they should go and when they're old, they will not depart from it. Stop having a victim mentality, one more time, stop having a victim militality. If students of North Chicago want to succeed, they can succeed, one more time. If the students of North Chicago want to succeed, they can succeed, they can succeed. If they want to succeed, they can succeed and um. We have to give the children of North Chicago a reason why, a reason why they should push, a reason why they should go to school. They wanna have a reason and if we keep talking down on them, we, if they, all they see is negative things about their community, they don't have a drive, they don't have a motive. They don't have a reason to do, to achieve, they don't have a reason to achieve. Because all they see is negative, all they see is they can't do it, all they see is that they're not capable of doing it, because everyone wants to say negative things. Not just people outside our community, but the people inside our community, we have to build our community up, not tear it down by, by all. Other negative things we have to say about our students. Build them up, not break them down, this is not the military, amen, amen. But um, let's go, we need to let the personal vendettas go. We need to, we need to let the ego go, we need to let the, let the uh, the need, the want for power. We need to let it go, we need to start um, start. Really trying to be a community, start really trying to work together as a community instead of just talking about negative, we need to, once again. Change the narrative, change the true narrative of our students, to the true narrative of our community. Not just the negative, because once again, everything is a negative in North Chicago. Everything is a negative in North Chicago, we must be active members of our community, but not passive, active, not passive. And we need to. Uh, stick to, to progress. We need to debate in public, we need to vote in public and we need to have decorum. And um. We need to build together, we need to lift our, lift up our community and we need to continue to work to fix it, fix our problems. And stop putting the blame on everyone else, but take a look at, take a look into ourselves, take a look into what we're doing. Ask ourselves, are we doing everything that we can do to contribute to help our community? And um. Once again, train up a child in the way they should go and when they're old, they will not depart from it. Proverbs twenty-two six. So. Once again, this is the first episode of the reboot of the accounts podcast. And I'm here because I love North Chicago and I want us to move forward together and um. And if this resonates with you, make sure you follow, make sure you like, make sure you subscribe and uh, make sure, but more importantly, make sure you come to the next meeting. Make sure you come, try to volunteer and make sure you come to, to sports games and activities and events that are hosted by the district, make sure you. Bring your questions, bring your experiences, bring things that you can do to contribute to our community, make sure you bring that with you. If you are good at this, try to help you, use what you're good at to help our community and um. Let's focus on giving the students, giving the community the progress that they deserve and um, you know. Not personal narratives, not egos, not anything like that, just positive. Getting, giving the students of North Chicago what they deserve is a quality education and a quality community and a community where they can learn and grow. Positively, amen, a, amen, thank you, amen.